Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, August eighth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty P M. And I will call to order the Free Town Board of Slough Meeting. Um, this meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube site. Um, we're starting off today with border health, so I'm gonna kick it over to Jared.
Alright, so I'm gonna start by opening up the public hearing. Um, and then go into item agenda number one. It's a variance hearing for applicants Diane Cabral and our two sons Realty Trust. Um, for the Board of Health variance for the septic upgrade property located at two thirty-one Middle Bar Road. And we have.
Darren McHales from Forsight. If you want, if you wanna read the next one too, it's easier to take both of the same project side by side.
Okay, so the next one would be application of Craig and Corey Cabral for the Board of Health variances for the septic upgrade. At the property located at two thirty-three Middle Bar Road.
We have the science on our.
So yeah, Darren McHales, Forsight Engineering here, Mr. Cabral. So we'll start with two thirty-one.
Can I just interrupt you for one minute? Do you have the meeting notice?
Yeah, give him the deal.
I uh, I'm just thinking, we might wanna read it out loud.
There's no notice, it's basically I'm required to send them a copy of the variances in the plan, so I send them a plan with a sticky note on it that gives them the meeting date and time.
Okay.
It's not a public notice like a.
It's a lot of, I know, it's a variance hearing, not a public hearing, but if there was a public news.
That's the plans, the plans that I gave you. Have the notice right on it, has the sticky, yeah, and has all the variances right underneath it.
Okay, so there's no formal meeting notice that needs to be read into the market, that's.
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, no worries. Yeah, so all the abuttes that were notified are basically the water departments, because of the pond.
Yep.
Even though the septic's are further than a hundred feet, we still notify them because the tanks are within a hundred feet, so kind of above and beyond notifying in many ways. Um, but two thirty-one is kind of unique, has two residents on the property, one up by the middle bar road, the three-bedroom dwelling. And a one-bedroom cottage down on the pond. Um, currently, the cottage has a tight tank. And the existing home has a nineteen ninety tank and two flow diffuses, which aren't quite working well. Uh, we're proposing to turn the tight tank into a septic tank, so a pump tank, run a new force main up. To a microfast system, which would be behind the existing dwelling. Um, that helps us with grading and the size of the system, that's why we're offering the microfast, and then a standard gravity effect. Quick four uh, bed that's kind of raised above grade, you can see the grading. Um, you can kind of see if the system is any bigger, we might need walls to save that building that's right behind us, or along the property line, so that's why the microfast is offered. Um, that'll have a two-year contract that comes with it, and then it'll be up to the homeowner to maintain that contract. Be part of the deed notice, there'll be more on his deed, so anyone researching the property will know that has a treatment system on it. Um, I think it's a much better situation than what's there. Um, the tight tank down by the pond and a failed system in groundwater, now we can have a treatment system that's more than a hundred feet from the actual resource area. I think it's a good improvement to the property.
Perfect. Yeah, that's a question I always ask for these sort of things, I'm obviously not an expert, but it puts us in a better situation than we're currently in, I think it seems to be.
Yeah, and he's gonna already have both houses, so that's what we're going through calling phone board is to actually fix the houses down on the pond, and then pick them up, put foundations underneath them. And reconstruct the houses right there, so be much better than what's down there today, which is kind of dilapidated. Um, two thirty-three Middle Bar Road is a little bit simpler, it's just a small cottage down on the pond. Uh, we're actually gonna put a pump and a tank down by the pond, and then send the system way up by the other system, you know, two thirty-three. So the pumps will kind of be near each other and help with drainage, and that gets us beyond the four hundred feet, uh, two hundred feet from the pond. And we're not required to have treatment for that. So that'll be a standard-sized system, because it's only a small cottage, so you can see the systems are almost the same size, the microfast. Uh, and again, uh, it's a cesspool or privy on the property that's clearly in the water tables, there's water tables almost ground level there. Uh, and now we're gonna have a system that's further from the pond and above grade, and we tell the standards.
Yeah, um, Dale, you don't have any input on this, or?
I know Kevin and I went over on both, I mean, it's a vast improvement on what you have now. Um, which like Darren said, they're probably leaking into the pond. Um, this is the, the best-case scenario, you're pulling them hundreds of feet away.
Okay.
Um, granted, you'll have tanks, but, but they'll be sealed up, so they shouldn't pose a problem with leaking or anything like that. But it's a big improvement over what you have.
Yeah, to driver's point, that's all we can ask for, right? I don't, I don't have any issues with it.
Alright.
Alright, so, um, with that, I just, I should just do both at the same time.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the applications for, um, two thirty-one and two thirty-three Middle Bar Road.
Alright, I'll second that. You made, you made.
I made, oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye. I screwed that one up.
Yeah, try to save it there.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that that, thank you? Alright, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, guys.
If I create, if it was more of a direct abutter, we were affecting them, then I would send them a formal letter with a meeting date and time on it. But for the water departments, they prefer to get plans from me, so that's why I put a sticky note on the plan, so then they don't call me after the plan later. Uh, I, that's the only reason why, they just common for calling me for plans, so it's easier to send them a plan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I give you the separation between.
Alright, so I will hand it back over to Trevor.
Uh, I think we have the, we have ten items too.
Sorry.
Did you, did you just close that?
Yeah, so, um, that'll close the public hearing. And agenda item number two, discussion and vote on having Borges Brothers pick up the trash on Fallwood Lane, which is an extension of Algonquin Way.
Yeah, sorry, yes, yeah.
I just need a quick signature from Jared on these, so we can process this tomorrow, right on the bottom where it says chairman. Great.
Thank you, Dale, I appreciate it.
No problem, guys. Alright, good to see you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
See you, my kids.
So this is, um. An extension within new development, so I'm assuming that because it's not an official subdivision yet, it still must be a private road. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yep, so this, yep, this is a private road, has one, I think one person living on it, if they'd like to have their trash picked up. So I, I said I didn't have a problem with it as long as, um, I think it's Longbilt that's doing that, that they agreed to, um. Give us their insurance, so, because it's a private way, so if Borges goes down there and there's an issue, it's actually, it would be between Longbilt and Borges.
Yep.
Uh, Luann reached out to Borges, they will, they will do it, they won't charge any more for it, because of course, we have a street listing on, on the contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and so it's just until the rule becomes approved public way, and then it will be part of our listing for the contract.
Okay, yeah, so you have any questions on that, Trevor?
Nope, that makes sense to me.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to, uh, have the trash picked up on Fallwood Lane Extension of Algonquin Way.
I'll make, uh, make that motion.
I will second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, right, perfect. Okay, next is, uh. Whether or not to approve the Town Free Towns Conservation Commission acquiring property at fifteen Richmond Road, map two oh seven lot seven, a sonnet and zero. Forge Pond Road, map two oh seven lot thirty-two point zero two, a sonnet, for which the M B A took possession of, it's dozen nineteen. So they took possession of it, but they are not gonna use it as part of the M T A, uh, project, so they're gonna give it back to us. I think it is gonna go into conservation, I think that makes sense. Any questions?
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the Town Free Town to, um, to have the, sorry, Town Free Town Conservation Commission acquiring the two properties that we had before.
Aye.
So, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to that.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's, it's confusing with two people, once again, it's in the rhythm with three.
Yeah.
Alright, so next is, um. I will entertain a motion to approve but not release it effective session of minutes from seven twenty-eight twenty twenty-two.
I will make that motion.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third is I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the open session meetings from seven twenty-five twenty twenty-two and seven twenty-eight twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, now is the special town meeting, so, um, it's like ten twenty, ten eighteen twenty twenty-two is the date. At the Free Town Lakeville Middle School Auditorium in ninety-six Holland Road, Lakeville. So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, hold the special town meeting on that day at that location.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this is continuing on. So the timeline. Which is in the packet.
If anybody needs to be sworn in for the year, they can walk to the dispatch center, I can play you.
Um, let's work, do you know what page it's on?
Take the timer now, I'm recording it right now.
I have it on page thirty-six.
Just, oh, yeah, perfect. Alright, so timeline is, so we'll be open for submissions of the warrant, um, eight-nine twenty twenty-two at eight A M through, uh. Eight twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two at twelve P M. You know, there will be posted at the, um, physical posting of the town hall, police, fire, and libraries. Uh, there'll also be Facebook and website postings. Um. So postings will, uh, state articles submitted by citizens, which require one hundred signatures from Free Town voters to be added to the warrant. Um, and emails will be sent, sorry, email warrants will be opened to, I'm sorry, to all the department heads, boards, and committee chairs. Send emails, yeah. Then what's, uh, submissions will be closed for the warrant at eight twenty-two twenty twenty-two. Then on the warrants being the board's document agenda for eight twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to approve, it's to be sent to town council. Warrants to V O S, and the board's document agenda for nine-six twenty twenty-two, for discussion and vote, will, um, on approval of closing warrant. And send the final version, final version of the warrant to the finance committee at nine-nine twenty twenty-two, and then it'll be, uh, posted publicly no later than ten-three twenty twenty-two. Alright, any questions?
No, straightforward.
That timeline works for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to, um, approve the, uh, special town meeting timeline. Um, for the ten eighteen twenty twenty-two meeting.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now. Related to that is, um, to vote to open the special town meeting warrant, so without, I'll entertain a motion to open the special town meeting warrant for the meeting at ten eighteen twenty twenty-two. For submissions from eight-nine, which is tomorrow, twenty twenty-two at eight A M, through eight twenty-two twenty twenty-two at four P M.
Motion made.
So, just the calendar that you read, I think, said twelve P M on eight twenty-two twenty-two? So just pick a time and make sure we're clear.
Alright, so I think we'll, yeah, so it'll, it'll be four P M, if that makes more sense.
Okay, that's.
Right? And. Okay, so yeah, so. Yeah, so, uh, do I have that motion then?
Uh, yes, motion made.
Alright, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, next is.
Chief is coming over.
Okay. Should I skip nine and ten, go back to them?
Yep.
So the chief gets there, okay, so agenda, agenda item eleven is, um. Discussion and vote whether to approve the animal control warrant twenty twenty-three, which we looked at. I couldn't believe how many dogs there are that come with us.
I know.
And I would definitely search to make sure it wasn't on the list.
As does I.
I checked if you weren't on the list. Yeah, I'm sure that, I definitely know some people on this list. Uh, yeah, so. I will entertain a motion to, um, approve the animal control warrant for twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for performing.
Yeah, uh, next is the permit to allow a child to live on the property of nineteen Quan Park Road. Any discussion on this?
No.
Alright, alright, so yeah, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for a permit to allow to a child to live on the property of nineteen Quan Park Road.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
I should just state dates on that, on for three weeks?
Uh, yeah, sorry.
You might wanna just say for three weeks, beginning on.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, uh, when we modify that last. Um.
Motion.
Motion, so I'll. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, um, through the request for a permit to allow a child to live on the property of nineteen Quan Park Road for three weeks, starting today. That it says?
I know.
It doesn't have a D on there, right?
I would say tomorrow would be fair.
Okay, so, uh, three weeks, starting eight-nine twenty twenty-two. Okay, do I have that motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving along. Alright, so now, um, Suckin Gobes is not here, so I will be doing the personnel chair stuff in his place. So, I'm, um, I'm gonna acknowledge the following resignations. Um, Michael Dignasis as full-time single operator, effective seven twenty-nine twenty twenty-two. Ella Hague as single operator, effective, uh, s- eight-six twenty twenty-two. Michael, uh, Guzzo, uh, as call firefighter, effective seven-one twenty twenty-two. Pam Souza as assistant town clerk, effective nine.
Town accountant.
Assistant town, sorry, what did I say, town clerk, wow. Pam Souza as assistant town accountant, effective nine thirty twenty twenty-two. Um, Daniel, uh, Z-Zajak as call firefighter E M T, effective ten twenty-one twenty twenty-two. And Joseph Cavalo as, uh, tobacco compliance officer, effective seven twenty, seven twenty-seven twenty twenty-two. So, um, I guess I'll entertain a motion to accept these following, following resignations.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next are appointments, we have Linda Andre Rodriguez as recording clerk, finance committee, effective eight-eight twenty twenty-two through six-thirty twenty twenty-three, so. And, um, Michael R., uh. Uh, Dignasis, I can't pronounce that name, I don't think, as part-time single operator, effective seven twenty-nine twenty twenty-two through six-thirty, so just went from full-time to part-time, obviously. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to make the follow, to make those appointments.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so the, um, this is a denim to Luann's agreement, and this is, uh, a stipend for the cell phone.
So there, uh, there's a couple of different.
Okay.
Moving parts, one is for the boat ramp, because we don't have like a.
Yep, so this is.
Position for the boat ramp.
Yep.
So it's that, also, her original contract didn't have sick time in it, um.
That's interesting.
At all, so.
Is that even leaked?
I, I don't, I don't, we put it, we put the same sick time that the, um. That the union personnel get, which is pretty standard across our board, but there's that, and then the cell phone, and then, uh, I think that was pretty much the majority of it.
Oh, then the holiday, Juneteenth being added.
Yes.
Which is standard with all the other kind of, uh.
So it was more of, um, procedural thing, like I said, because I don't know what happened with her original contract, there was no sick time.
Okay.
Called out in it, so.
Alright, I have, you have any questions?
No.
That seems very fair to me. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the addendum to Luann's Mrs.'s agreement.
Motion made.
Um, second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now I'm gonna jump back before. Stop, I'm, Jenna, sixteen will be next. Chief, thank you for joining us, I know a lot going on right now. Okay, so this is, um, voting a sufficient number of police officers or constables for the polling locations in Free Town. And. I'll let you finish your simple argument. Um, so, I guess. How many difficult, I know we need at least one at each, right?
So we recently went over to the elementary school and determined that we, we should have two during the.
Okay.
Any election there, because apparently, one of the officers that, that will be present has to be focused on the ballot box. Because the officer holds the key or mechanism when there are jams and stuff like that.
Gotcha.
So while that officer is preoccupied with the ballot box, nobody is watching. The entrance that the public can easily make, um, you know, access to the rest of the school.
Makes sense.
So the recommendation was for us to try to get two officers for those elections.
Okay, alright. And Cheryl, do you have any input on this? Now, this is your realm.
Uh, I don't have any additional input, but, um, he is correct in that one police officer does have to be stationed within the polling location to monitor those ballot boxes.
Okay.
Um, so then if there is, you know, a deterrent or an issue with that entrance, or, um, anything like that. We can't really pull that police officer out of that polling location to address those concerns.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
Mm-hmm. So, I know in advance, uh, the, uh, the clerk's office sends the, uh, the calendar of the elections, et cetera. To the school in hopes that, um, the school can, you know, make their plans around that.
Yes.
But this year, for example, we were told that, uh, was it opening?
It's first day.
Yeah.
First day of school, they, they, you know, we're gonna have an election there on the first day of school, and. That's gonna be pretty crazy.
And apparently, the school couldn't do anything about it, they were kind of firm on the dates that they had to choose, so, um. So that was why, you know, the chief's point is gonna be kind of.
So if school is not in, not in session, then yes, one officer should be sufficient. If school is in session, then we'll need to try to get two officers.
Okay.
So the next election would be the, um, state election in November eighth. Which the kids will be off from school that day.
Okay, great. Alright, so that seems to make sense to me, so I guess. Um, I'll entertain a motion to have two police officers or constables for the polling, um, location in Free Town.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and then ten, so this is to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to schedule and availability of town elections. So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, have the chief choose, or sorry, I'll just read it as it is. I'll entertain a motion to have the chief designate the police, uh, the authority to sign specific police, assign specific police o-officers according to schedule and availability of town elections.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect, thank you. And. I think that's all for you right now, right?
Kind of eighteen, maybe?
Eighteen?
Just procedural.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'll just take care of that while you're here. So, uh, this is Jenna, item eighteen, vote on whether to take Officer, uh, Mello off injured-on-duty status and reinstate to his position as full-time patrolman, effective eight-eight twenty twenty-two. And we saw you got the, the clean bill of sale from the doctors.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that seems pretty, yeah, that's great, great news.
Long, long time of, uh, between s- medical attention and recovery.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get into all the details.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public, yeah.
I hear ya, okay, so with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um, take Officer Mello off injured and, uh, off injured-on-duty status and reinstate. To full-time patrolman, effective eight-eight twenty twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright.
Let's do nineteen-two while he's here.
Alright. And then, is it approved two percent coal raise for, uh, lockup attendance, effective seven-one twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, they, they were not specifically included in the omnibus budget, correct? But there's funding for that.
That's correct, so what, um, in, in personnel, we usually have enough of a, a buffer that we can accommodate any, any, um, you know, compensation. There's, there's a minimum out in that line item, um, but it should be enough to address this, yeah.
Alright, and so just, yeah.
It just needs a specific, it needs a vote, because our vote was to approve raises as they were in the omnibus budget.
And then this one wasn't.
Specifically, so this needs a request.
Okay, that makes sense.
Does this have to go back to town meeting again?
No, no, no.
No, because the town meeting made the appropriation for that particular line item.
Yeah.
That particular line item is within the personnel category. So, so you, on those individual line items in the personnel category, you can go into the red. As long as that bottom line on the category is in the black, right? So we should be okay.
Oh, good, well, that's encouraging.
Alright, great, alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two percent coal raise for lockup attendance, effective seven-one twenty twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect. Okay, now I think you're really done.
Alright.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, this is sixteen, which is related to fifteen, which we already voted on, but this is, um, to approve the, uh, M O A between the Town of Free Town and Luann's Mrs. So we went over that.
Yeah, this is the, because she's a contract employee, it requires an amendment to her contract in order to be able to pay her. And, and change the, um, the sick time and whatnot.
Yep, that makes sense to me, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, M O A between Town of Free Town and Luann's Mrs.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now this is for Lola.
So Lola's the same thing, like, the contract just didn't provide for her to have, I don't even know if it went for the last year.
It was, she got the cost of living, this, the two percent raise this year fiscal twenty-three, but her contract goes to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. But there's no, um, two percent in there.
Gotcha.
So that's what this will.
So this would, so this would be effective next July.
Right.
Correct.
And it'll be a two percent increase.
Right, which was discussed, it just wasn't put in, it wasn't, so the contracts, I'm not sure what happened last year.
Yeah, that's right. Any questions on this?
No, straightforward.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the M O A between Town of Free Town and Lola.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now move on to Town Administration's report.
Alright, just a few quick things, um. First, yeah, I think it's gotten some good publicity, but everybody's aware that there's gonna be some road closures for the. The work being done on the railroad crossings, the first one will be coming up, uh, Thursday, August eleventh to August fifteenth. Chase Road will be, um, closed, and there are detours, and we have stuff based, uh, posted on Facebook, so please take a look at that. Also, Braly Road is going to be, um, closed for approximately two weeks, from Thurs- Thursday, August eighteenth. To, uh, roughly like August thirtieth, so take a look at that one as well.
I saw that.
Yeah, that's a long closure, and, uh, you need to take a look at that. Chipaway Road will also be closed towards the end of September, so take a, we'll keep you updated as I have the specifics on that. That'll also be only a four-day closure. These first two do not impact the school buses, Chipaway will, so, um. The school has been notified about those, but just more of an awareness, people, um, pay attention, look, look at the Facebook, look, uh, online, or call our office, we'll, we'll. Walk you through what's going on, so that's one thing I want to tell that everybody know. Also, just wanted to update some of the grants that we've got, um, Vicki King at the transfer station got a grant for, like, a mattress container. For ten, up to ten thousand dollars, and, and, and she, she did all the paperwork for that, so. That, that was awesome. Rep Schmidt, uh, has given, uh, the town an earmark of twenty-five thousand dollars for operating the boat ramp, which, uh, will. Will make great advancements over there and things that we can do. Um, Representative Fiola, uh, has approved a seventy-five thousand dollar earmark, which will help paint the old schoolhouse. And if there's money left over, feasibility study for the town hall. Um, I also wanna just say, we all, uh, we had this current work being done on South Main Street that is ever-sourced, uh. Paving the road and trying to put, um, improvements for reliability for our electric service. So patience is needed for South Main Street right now. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, I went to the firefighter softball game yesterday and watched the Free Town firefighters. Play softball against the towns of Berkeley and Dayton, they had, it was a tournament, they had to play all three games, they did great. They didn't ultimately prevail, but they did proud by our town for sure, so that was entertaining. And that's, I think that's it, right now, we're working on procurement of all of the projects that were funded through the town meeting, so painting the schoolhouse. Um, feasibility studies and all that, we're working on getting the bids out for those, those projects. And as you know, everybody's always busy in the town hall, working, working, working.
And also, Tabby and I today went to the launch of the Eco Harvester for Long Pond, and so it's exciting, uh, I know a lot of people worked very hard for a long time to get this done. And, uh, it looks like this is a first step in really cleaning up Long Pond, taking care of the serious invasive weeds issue they have, so.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
And that's really all I've got for what's going on, things I wanted to bring up.
Public input?
Yeah, that'd be Cheryl.
Cheryl?
You're the public now, Cheryl.
So first of all, I would like to thank the board for, um, having me on today, I'd like to take this opportunity just to notify the voters and residents of Free Town with the changes in the, uh. New Voters Act that was just passed in June and took effect July twenty-second. It's more of, um, informative for our residents and our voters, and I'd like to continue, um. Kind of going on this medium and then possibly posting things on Facebook and on the town website to, uh, make our voters aware. So with that being said, for the twenty twenty-two state primary, um, know before you go update. The pri- the state primary is gonna, is set for Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two. All three precincts will be voting in the same location at Free Town Elementary School, and we ask that the voters use the Memorial Drive entrance. Uh, polls are open from seven A M. to eight P M. Um, and as Carlton had mentioned, part, uh, Chief Carlton had mentioned, it is the first day of schools, so, uh, we want to remind voters that they may wanna avoid. Any school drop-off times or pickup times if they wanted to come in and vote, just because it might be a little congested in that area, so we can figure out, um. Some good ways to kind of, uh, separate the lines there. Uh, I also wanted to make the voters aware that we have two different legislative districts here in Free Town, one for Rep Schmidt's, um, precinct two and three. And one for Rep Fiola in precinct one, so there are, even though there are Democrat and Republican ballots, there are, um, two separate ballots, so a total of four ballots.
Interesting.
So, um, there are three options in which the voters can pass their ballots. We have in-person on primary day as usual, uh, we have vote by mail, all where, all voters should have received a card, a postcard. Uh we have vote by mail, all where's, all voters should have received a card, a postcard um from the Secretary of State's office. Um indicating if they want to receive a vote by mail ballot, um we've actually processed um close to. Six hundred and twenty applications for the state primary, uh we've processed over five hundred and five forty-five ballots. So those have gone out, so residents and voters should expect those in the mailboxes soon, they have several options on which to return those. That is either in-person to the town clerk's office, or uh via U- US mail, or utilize the white drop box out in front of town hall. Those ballots do have to be in by eight PM on election day. And then uh thirdly, we have in-person early voting, so similar to what the in-person that we've had in twenty sixteen and in twenty twenty. Um early in-person voting is going to be held um starting August twenty seventh, so that's a Saturday. The polling location actually is gonna be here in the community room, here at the police station, um we will be here from eleven AM until five PM. And then there will be no voting on Sunday, and then it will continue with regular town hall business hours. Monday through Thursday, eight AM till four PM, and then on Friday from eight AM until twelve o'clock noon, um and then again is that the town hall. If folks uh folks don't need to sign up for that, you just show up and vote as you would normally on election and primary, so no applications, no postcards. Just show up and vote, um if you have applied to vote by mail but instead wish to vote in person, please do not mail your ballots back in. You will be turned away at the polls. So if you've already applied, um. Don't mail your ballot, if you've already applied to vote by mail but wanna vote in person, don't uh do not mail your ballot. Um we went over the postcard applications, um I just wanted to remind residents and and voters. Uh when you're applying with those postcards, if you haven't submitted those yet, to please go ahead and do so, but please take note on the left-hand side, it says no party. That means you're not registered as either a Democrat or Republican, which gives you the option to choose your ballot, we do need you to indicate whether you're. Uh taking a Democrat or Republican ballot, uh we have about seventy voters who have mailed um postcards back to us. But they're in a hold pending status, we're gonna be contacting this this week because either their applications were not signed or didn't indicate which ballot they wanted. So those voters will be um contacted this week, and uh lastly, uh but certainly not least, if you have not registered to vote, the final voter registration will take place. On Saturday, August twenty seventh, which is the same day as early voting begins, and it will be by five PM, so nine AM to five PM, I will be at town hall. Accepting any final voter registrations.
Great, alright, that was very informative, and I think this is something we should definitely always do, it makes a lot of sense. Some some, sometimes stuff get confusing, so I think it's great to have it all.
Gets very confusing, we'll try to sort it out, so we're hoping to do some outreach, again, uh we'll do some some quick, you know, before you go videos, post those on the. Uh elections page on the town website. And um do some Facebook, some Facebook blast to hopefully get the word out. Now with this new votes act, there's a lot of uh. Video secret season and and differences than in previous years, so you just wanna make sure that we're clear and everyone understands. But again, thank you so much for your time.
Cheryl, I just wanna clar- clarify, early voting during the week will be at the town hall.
Correct.
Saturdays will be at the community room at the police station.
Yep, Saturday only, but the Saturday is. Um not September third, it's the weekend before, so Saturday, August twenty seventh kicks off in-person early voting, and again, that's here. At the police station community room, and that will be from eleven AM until five PM. Off on Sunday, and then Monday through Friday at town hall.
Perfect. Alright, great, thank you very much. Alright, I think that's it, we're just gonna sign some stuff.
Feels weird not having someone to pass it.
There's two tabs on there, Jared. For each, one for each turn. This is acquiring the conservation.
The warrant for logs, I think most of it has to sign there.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, you're right. Fix it. And these are the M O As.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?